Do we get the mics on? There we go. Good. It is 5:30 PM. Today's date is April 26, 2021. It's Monday. We're at Ten West State Street, which happens to be the City Hall Council Chambers. Tonight is a regularly scheduled meeting. And to start it, I have to give this notice to the public that the mayor and council welcome comments from the public during discussion of any of the items on the agenda. You have to step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Limit your time to three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. I see Des Moines has a time limit of something like 45 seconds when they have a long agenda. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Would those who are able, now that we've been called to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Goudy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Lottie Hoff.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Very good. Looks like we have a full house. Onto item E, which is Mayor, Council, and Minister of Commerce. Before calling for those, I see that we have a proclamation on the agenda. And so I'd like to have Beth Custer, do I pronounce her last name correctly?
Yes.
Custer, come forward if you would, please. And this is a proclamation relating to neurofibromatosis, or NF Awareness Month in May of 2021. And before I present this to you, let me read it to the public and for the record. Whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation is observing May 17, 2021, as World Neurofibromatosis NF Awareness Day in May 21, May 2021, as NF Awareness Month to educate the public about this rare genetic disorder. And whereas although over 2 million people around the world are living with NF and one in every 3,000 births is diagnosed with NF, it is still relatively unknown to the public. And whereas NF affects all populations equally regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender. Whereas NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body, can also affect the development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones, and skin. Whereas the disorder can lead to blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disfigurement, learning disabilities, disabling pain, and cancer. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation leads efforts to promote and financially sponsor world-class medical research aimed at funding, at finding effective treatments and ultimately a cure for NF. Whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation is actively fostering collaborative partnerships in both science and industry to speed the drug research and development process through a number of consortia called Sinodos. And whereas the Children's Tumor Foundation works to improve access to quality patient healthcare throughout the national NF clinic network. Whereas Children's Tumor Foundation provides patient and family support through its information resources, youth programs, and local chapter activities. And whereas much remains to be done in raising public awareness of NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management and treatment, prevention, and applications, and support for research. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Joel Greer of the City of Marsh Town, in recognition of this important initiative, do proclaim May 20, May 2021 as NF Awareness Month. And furthermore, on May 17, as NF Awareness Day. In witness where I have a hearing to set my hand and cause my seal to be fixed this 26th day of April 2021. Would you like to come forward and accept the proclamation first? And if you'd like to speak to it, you're welcome to.
He doesn't bite.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anything specific you'd like me to share?
No. But if you'd like to, you're welcome to.
Sure. Tate was diagnosed with NF1 when he was two and a half. His tumors are internal, right? But he's doing great. So, inside. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you much. And thanks, boys. Let's see. Do we have years of service tonight as well? Jessica, are we doing?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know if Chief would like to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
Okay. Mike Tupper, Marsh Town Police Department. So, last week, we celebrated Admin Professionals' Day. And so it's fitting that we're now celebrating Rhonda Allen for 10 years of service with the Marsh Town Police Department, the City of Marsh Town. So Rhonda is one of my favorite people. She works so hard in the police department. And working as a civilian employee in the police department with cops and police chiefs is a tough gig. Hunter knows, right? It's a tough job. It's a tough job. And Rhonda just does a magnificent job for us. She's got a very important job, critically important job to our mission of maintaining our record system and making sure guys like me fill out their reports properly so that lawyers don't come after me. So, in fact, she caught an error on a report I submitted Friday. So I appreciate her service. But Rhonda, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate everything that you do for us. It's a tough job. You go through a lot of difficult things, just like all the cops do, and you're right there with us. So I want to congratulate you on 10 years of service and thank you very much for everything that you do.
Following Chief Tupper, I wanted to say a few words tonight, recognizing Kevin Piggers, your current Transit Administrator. Kevin is celebrating 10 years this month, actually earlier, well, earlier this month. Kevin spent, correct if I'm wrong, the first seven years, first seven years as our Transit Mechanic, in which his expertise was invaluable in maintaining our fleet. Because as some of you may know, we have some buses that are in excellent condition and we have some buses that are in not-so-excellent condition. And then in 2018, following Rich Stone's passing, Kevin was an applicant and an excellent candidate to become the Transit Administrator. I really appreciate Kevin's ability to have a growth mindset. He is always proactive. He is always thinking of ways to make Marshall Town Municipal Transit a better transit system. And I greatly appreciate all the things that he does for Marshall Town Municipal Transit and for the City of Marshall Town.
We don't make you speak if you don't want to. Thanks, Kevin.
Speech.
Is that it for our recognitions tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. Then it is time to move on to the consent agenda. I have been asked by the consulars to poll numbers.
Oh, whoa, timeout. Counselor comments?
Oh, you are right. Sorry.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Mayor comments.
Mayor, Mayor, Council, and Administrator comments, yeah. I had skipped over that. It should have been under there. Yes, it is time for that. Does anybody wish to speak?
Me? Okay. If I may, Your Honor?
You may.
Okay. Shout out to the TR this weekend. There were two things in the paper this weekend. The Marsh Town Area Chamber of Commerce insert, and there was a nice little article about the fireworks. And, and just want to let the public know, we have not reached our goal yet. Money is flowing in. But if anybody in the public would like to write a check, we will not turn it down. So it's going to be a great show, and I hope everybody turns out for it. And then the other thing that was in the TR this weekend was this little insert about the kindergartners and the career paths that they saw for themselves in the future. And Ryerson and Tupper must be doing something right with the grade schools because there's a heck of a lot of people in here that want to be firefighters and police officers. Don't see a lot of city counselors listed. Joel, I'm sorry, I don't see a lot of mayors listed. But my favorite in here was a young lady. Oh, and there are engineers. So, Justin, you need to track these kids, okay? Keep them happy. Keep them in town. But my favorite is a little girl named Evelyn from East Marshall Elementary. She wants to be a toy maker. And we could use more toy makers in this world. So, anyway, I just, I got a kick out of this. So, Mike, Dave, and Justin, keep in contact with the kids that are listed in here that want to follow your paths. So, thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Madam Administrator, how about you?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing for me tonight either. So let's then go on to the consent agenda. And I've been asked to poll items 6, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. Could I change that to 14 instead of 15? Okay, 14. 15 is in. I wondered about that. So we're taking out 14, and 16, and 19. With those exclusions, is there anybody moving that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's see. Tie goes to Isom on that one. Roll call.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Okay. That has carried. Let's go on to item six. And whoever wanted to pull that one, let's see what we should discuss.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Can the city clerk read the ones we approved, please?
Oh, we could do that first. Sure.
Approved minutes from the April 12, 2021 meeting, and April 14, 2021 meeting, and a bill list in the amount of $1,350,944.97. Approved civil service hire list for the transit operator and street maintenance worker for. Building permit report for March 2021. March 2021 financial statements. Approved liquor license renewals for Dollar General Store 21858 at 104 West State Street and Dollar General 4206 at 2413 South Center Street. Resolution amending a grant agreement for shared wall repair with Joel Botello and Antonio Botello to, for the amount of $53,450. Resolution amending a grant agreement for shared wall repair with Wen Kai for the amount of $68,170. Resolution approving contract change order number two for the South First Street Parking Lot Stormwater Improvements Project Number PLT 19001, an increase of $17,509.50. Resolution ordering construction of the Anson Park Shelter Improvements Project Number PRK 20001, setting public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost in directing publication of notice to bidders. Resolution transferring funds of fiscal year 2021 through March 31, 2021.
Thank you. Now on to item number six. First, is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's visit about why that's pulled off the agenda, or the consent agenda.
We don't even know what the item is yet. I think it would be helpful to read the motion first.
Let's do that for the public that's...
Resolution authorizing the City of Marshall Town to request assignment of a tax certificate for 503 Woodbury Street, parcel number 841826478002, held by Marshall County.
This, just to remind you, this was a discussion item from two weeks ago where you had asked to move forward, making the request for this tax certificate.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody up here at the council who wanted to pull that want to address that?
Your Honor, I asked that that be polled. I was asked by the public, they would like to make, someone in the public would like to make a comment on that.
Okay. Anyone else up here on the council dais wish to speak to it? Seeing nobody stepping forward, I will open up to the public. Go ahead and unmute the mics.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I think it's a good thing to get these dilapidated and vacant properties back on the tax roll. My, I think we can get more money as a taxpayer if we can clearly state that we have a clean, a clean title. An abstract comes with the grounds. And it is unclear whether any liens or, or loans that are, that are not closed have passed through the city, or if the city cleans those up. And I think we should have clarification of that. Thank you.
Anyone on the telephone or computer wish to speak to this? We'll leave the mic open for another 10 seconds.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, how does that work when we, I guess I never thought about that. How does that work when we take possession of a property? What happens to all the encumbrances that are attached to that property? Are they waived because we're a municipality?
We are only asking that the special assessments and the delinquent taxes of the city and the county be waived on this. I have not run a title search. I have advised the requester of this, who is Monte Eaton, to pursue that if that's something that he's interested in. Typically, I think Roger ends up doing a title search after we get the certificate so that we can notify the appropriate lien holders. But typically, we don't do that in advance of getting the certificate.
So all these properties that we've been, this dangerous and dilapidated program, like the 657As, is that the same type of thing?
No, it's a completely different thing.
Okay. So when we're flipping properties, where, you know, we're buying and tearing down houses and picking up different ones for different reasons, the person that buys it, are they getting saddled with more debt than they thought when they bid on the properties?
Not generally.
So we're typically doing quit claims on them. We're not doing warranty deeds. And so that's, that's one of the, one of the ways that we, we get around some things. But ultimately, we have gone down the path of requesting tax certificates before Roger then runs something. We see that there are some significant liens from the federal government or the state government, and we don't pursue that as a path anymore. So...
So those properties, we decide not to chase, then?
There's, there typically would be an alternative remedy in most cases, but not all cases. Vacant lots, typically, we don't have a remedy for that. If there's some sort of significant lien on it that is not something that we can request be removed from the county, that's going to probably continue to stay there until it's paid off.
So as much as we're trying to clean up Marshall Town, there's still going to be some properties that because of the liens, we just, we can't accomplish our goals. Is that what, is that what I'm hearing you say?
There could be.
Okay.
Yeah. If there's a structure on it, that's typically where we'll go 657A because that process will wipe out all liens on the property. But it can only be if there's a building. You can't have an abandoned lot per Iowa code, Chapter 657A. It's only an abandoned building.
What does, Your Honor?
You may.
But I believe in order for this to work, basically, we ask the county for the tax certificate. They clear off any past taxes there. We waive our past taxes that are on it there. And then, then it comes down to if there's any private liens on the property. And so as soon as we get our hands on it, then Roger can look at it and see if there's any liens on it. So when we go to auction it or take it for bid, anybody that is bidding on the property will know what they are. Wish there was a way we could clean that up somehow. Maybe we lobby somebody that used to sit on this, this panel who has more pull with the state. Because that's going to, I got to believe that a lot of these properties we're trying to clean up and these vacant lots, we're going to hit a brick wall, so to speak, on some of these.
Yeah, it's, it's always a potential. So, but that's really where, that's the, the risk of the individual requesting the tax certificates as well.
I guess I will plead naivete on all that. I did not even think about that. So, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to address us on before we call the roll? Let's call the roll.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Carried. Madam Clerk, please read number nine for us.
Resolution authorizing an agreement with Five Star Real Estate Group for the listing of lots in the VAO Bluffs subdivision.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Did you catch those?
I had Goudy with the motion and Isom with the second.
There you go. Discussion.
Yeah, this is, so later on in the agenda, there is the preliminary plat for the VAO Bluffs subdivision. And so this is allowing for the mayor to authorize an agreement with 5% commission with Five Star Realty, or Real Estate to list and sell those lots. Once they're created, a final plat will have to come back to you at some point before any transaction can go through, along with any public hearings to sell lots as well.
Okay. Discussion up front here, why it was pulled off the agenda.
Again, Your Honor, I was asked by a member of the public to poll this. They'd like to make public comment on this.
Well, if nobody else up here wants to speak, let's open the mics for another 15 seconds.
The microphones are open.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Since most of this real estate stuff happens in closed session...
I'm sorry, I can hear somebody on the telephone at the same time. So whoever's on the telephone, we'll ask you to speak second. Let's let Mr. Eaton finish what he was saying.
My question is, is the council, and, okay, I know there's an order to all of this stuff. But at some point, it's possible that you could be asked to enter into a dual agent agreement or dual agency agreement where the seller represents both the, that selling agent represents both the seller and the buyer. In that case, the commission is not split to the realtor. And so I don't know if that decision has been made or not. But I don't think you should enter into dual agency agreements because it allows too close a contact between the selling agent and the buyer, well, actually, the seller and the buyer through the one realtor. So that's just my position. Thank you.
Now, for the gentleman whose voice I could hear on the phone, we didn't pick up very well on the microphone, but go ahead and...
You need to turn up the volume. I accidentally turned it down.
Turn up the volume.
I think it's bottom left, maybe?
Okay, yeah. Try that again if you would, sir.
Okay, this is Greg Brown, 707 Circle Drive. I'm not on the telephone. I'm on the computer. So I'm not sure if you're the one that you're referring to.
We can hear you now.
Okay, all right. I have a question for Jessica and also a question for the council. Jessica, can you tell me after tonight, assuming this issue passes, what the process is? If you want me to, please?
Yeah, just the, the process generally is going to be then that we'll, we'll have a, a meeting with Five Star Real Estate if this is approved, to basically get the listing agreement in place and then list the properties. I would expect that we could have that done by the end of this week.
And then what happens after that? What are the deadlines? What are the mile markers?
I, if we receive any offers prior to the May 10 council meeting, then those offers would be presented in closed session at the May 10 council meeting. Otherwise, it would be, the properties will be listed on the market and will be available for, for sale.
And you have this, as I understand it, in two lots? Is that correct?
Technically, that action occurs later on in the council meeting. But yes, that's what's proposed.
Okay. So if you have proposed this, what was your reason for breaking it into two lots? I'm just curious, please.
Well, just that it made the most sense that this has been a parcel that we see is very developable. And to break it down into two parcels that do align on a property line will hopefully resolve conflicts in the future.
And explain again why you, why, how you divided it up?
Do I, do I need to repeat myself? Or was, can you hear me?
I could hear you better when the mic was close to you.
Yeah, the, I just stated that it was basically to create two sellable lots because they are considered development property and that ultimately being on the property line could, could help in future issues in the neighborhood.
All right. And then, Jessica, what do you see as the sellable, marketable advantages of lots two?
That it is served by a road and that there are utilities available to serve that lot.
All right. Thank you. Then if I may, just address a comment to the council. Several weeks or several months ago, there is intense discussions on the protection or the atmosphere surrounding Iowa River Hospice. And as you proceed with whatever you're doing relative to lots one and lots two, I would ask you to remember you all stood strongly to create an atmosphere that was to the advantage of Iowa River Hospice, something that the town promotes, something that the town, Chamber of Commerce has used strongly in their advertising and their efforts to attract people to Marshall Town. I'd ask that you remember the position that you took relative to the street as you analyze the steps ahead, including negotiations or offers that might be made via through Five Star Realty if that one passes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone or computer wish to speak? Okay, mic's been open long enough, I think, for that. Let's go ahead and take a vote.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Warren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried. And one ready. Madam Clerk, please go on and read number 10 for us.
Resolution to approve the COVID-19 Relief Recreational Trails Program application for the Iowa Rivers Edge Trail.
Solicited a motion first.
So moved, Your Honor.
And a second.
Second.
Discussion. Maybe I could call for whoever wanted to pull this off the agenda.
Your Honor, again, a member of the public asked to have this open for discussion.
Okay. Well, if anybody else up here wants to speak first, speak. Otherwise, we'll call it open for the public and unmute the mics. Let's go ahead and unmute the mics.
The microphones are unmuted.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Sorry, I'm the only one. So I, it wasn't included
in the consent agenda or the documentation, but I pulled the COVID Relief Recreational Trail Program Guidelines from the DOT website. This is a cost reimbursement program. The money must be spent before we get reimbursed, and the reimbursement is evaluated afterwards. It is a scored grant application. If, if you don't include a match, your score may reflect that and others may score higher. It is for $650,000. Looks like federal money passed down through the state. It is also, it also has many other eligible activities such as maintenance servicing, surfacing, and restoration of existing recreational trails, i.e. Lynn Creek Trail. Development and rehabilitation of trailside and trailhead facilities and trail linkages, such as the Sixth Street Park parking lot, where we're talking about putting a trailhead. And just in FYI, trail linkages are scored 40 points out of the 100, and all of the other, whatever qualifications are 20 points or less. So it would seem that this grant application could be better served in other parts of the, other trail applications. Thank you.
Let's leave it open to the public for another 10 seconds. Let's leave it open to the public for another ten seconds. Long enough. Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
That carried as well. Enable, read number eleven, please.
Resolution approving an offer to buy real estate for fifteen South First Street.
Solicite a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion.
Again, Your Honor, I ask this to be pulled, uh, per request of a taxpayer here in town.
Well, let's, uh, unless anybody else up here on the council wants to speak to it, let's open the mics again.
The lines are muted.
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. So in this resolution, we're buying a property, again, a real estate deal negotiated in closed session for ten thousand dollars, where we're gonna tear down the property next to it, uh, and we're gonna buy another property next to that for a dollar. So are we getting the best deal for our money? Um, just taxpayer question.
Anybody else in the public wish to address this? Let's go ten seconds again. Good enough. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
That carried as well. So enable, Madam Clerk, read number twelve.
Resolution relating to the financing of a proposed project to be undertaken by the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. We kinda know the drill now.
Good evening.
Good evening. Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So at the last meeting, we talked about, um, funding the rest of the soccer parking lot and-
Softball parking, yes.
Excuse me, softball, softball parking lot. Um, so at that time, we, you agreed to do a hundred and seventy-six thousand, so I'm just bumping it up a little bit. Um, Jay had reestimated the costs of that and the contract with construct went up a little bit. So just to make it a round number, just rounding it up to two hundred thousand. Do you have any questions on that? So this is next, the, the bond, the next bond issuance will, can go back and reimburse the two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
If we don't need it, we won't use it.
Sure. Let's call for council comment or questions first before we open up to the public. Go ahead and unmute. Or, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead and unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. Okay, so this, uh, regulation that we're voting on, basically, we're voting to tell everybody that we're spending money before we have the money, before we borrow the money. And at the time we borrow the money, there will be a public hearing, but there's no point in showing up for it because we're telling you now that we're borrowing the money. Now, there's three point two million in the council designated fund, which if that, some of that money were spent on this South Sixth Street project, we wouldn't have to issue this proclamation and we wouldn't have to borrow that money. And the public would have all of the stuff that you wanted to have. So, thank you.
Uh, let's go another five seconds on the phone and computer. Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Thank you. Enable number thirteen.
Resolution approving engineer's statement of completion and accepting the Veterans Memorial Coliseum renovation project, being project number BLD one nine zero zero one, with a final project cost in the amount of four million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Move forward, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion by council.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Um, I did have one question for Jeff, uh, Parking Rec Director, that he did answer why the, the sign wasn't done yet. And he said that was under the scope of insurance from the tornado damage and not under the renovation of the Coliseum. However, at the same time that I got my question answered, uh, I was asked by a member of the public to, um, bring this up for discussion from, from, uh, a member of the public, so. So Jeff answered my question. I'm not sure where we're going with this, but.
Let's see if there are any other council comments first and then ask for public comment. And then Jeff, if you, uh, want to address, unmute me. Unmute the mics, please.
The lines are unmuted.
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. I see that, that, first, the Coliseum looks very nice. I took a tour of it. Um, I've also used the conference room and it's very nice. Um, I see that there's a balance of two hundred and twelve thousand. I don't know if that's earmarked for anything, but that's a parking rec balance. And could that possibly used to do the Sixth Street parking lot? Thank you.
Uh, that balance is actually the retentions that we still are holding back from the project to make sure that everything's done. Um, we're still waiting for some operation manuals and some other things. So we're holding all that off like we would a normal project until we get everything out. This is just a substantial completion, but there's still some, a few things that still need to get done. So that's why we're holding on to that money.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jeff, if you would, for the public, I know you told me, but there's a lot of people asking about, they wanna see the iconic sign go back on the building. Would you tell the public what you told me about the timetable on that?
That I'm not for sure when that is?
Throwing the dart at the calendar.
Sure. Um, so Nagel is the one who we, we've, is redoing the sign for us. They're the ones who originally talked to about putting the old one up. Uh, it just wasn't really that feasible to do, so they, uh, quoted us a price, I think, of eleven thousand dollars to build a new one. It'll be aluminum, a lot lighter weight, um, easier to, easier to install. Um, but because of the Derratio and all the signs that are probably damaged around the area, we're, we're in the queue to have the Coliseum sign done. I don't have a date for them, but I'm hoping it's sometime this summer.
And again, for the public, it will look similar to the old sign.
I think if you drove past it and had, you haven't seen the sign for the last two years, you probably would drive past, not notice that it's, that it's a new sign than it is the old one up there.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Boy, there are a lot of signs around town that still haven't been replaced yet, so I'll bet Nagel's busy. Um, let's keep the mics open for another ten seconds in case anybody from the public wishes to speak further. Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Okay, carried as well. Enable, read the next one, please.
Resolution approving contract change order number two for the Twelfth Avenue Shared Use Path Project, number TRL one nine zero zero two, Engineering Services for Clap Saddle Garber Associates, Inc., an increase of eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Second.
And discussion.
And, Your Honor, I'm not, I don't think I was the only one asking on this one to be pulled, so I would yield to whoever else was asking on this one.
That would be me. Uh, conversation at breakfast this morning centered around, this sidewalk has been designed three times and multiple changes, whatever. We finally got a design that we accepted and it's gonna be built. And here's another change order and I, it's, there's a lot of whys.
Sure. Justin Nichol, Public Works Director, uh, the majority of this change order is for staking so that the, uh, the sidewalk gets built in the correct place. That is not a, uh, service that my department offers anymore. We don't have anybody, uh, a licensed land surveyor to be able to do that. Um, there are multiple ways that you could handle this. You could include this in the bid items of the project. We did not do that in this case, so we will need Clap Saddle and Garber Services to be able to set stakes to make sure that the sidewalk is built according to the plans.
I guess one question I might ask is, at some point, can we get a qualified or have a person get qualified that works up here?
So I have one position open right now and I would say we would need to redefine that position and increase the pay scale to have a qualified licensed land surveyor on our staff. I would say currently, no, we do not have the budget to do that.
It would be nice if we did. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
My reason was different. Um, I guess, do we have legal definitions for the shared use path? This is not a shared use path. That was one of the changes we made. We went to a sidewalk, so I would, I, I would like to see this treated as a typo, that we not refer to this as a shared use path, because that changes the scope of everything if somebody reads that.
That is a fair statement. I believe we were operating off the original engineering contract and that's what the title was. That, that's a fair statement.
Is it possible to change that moving forward or is that something you need to stay with, Justin?
Um, I, I don't see any reason it can't be changed.
Okay, 'cause I just, it's gonna open a can of worms down the road.
I can understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other council comments or questions? Unmute the mics for public comment about this one.
The lines are unmuted.
Let's go ten. Roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. And on to, uh, item number nineteen, which is the last one that we pulled off the consent agenda. Please read that for us.
I believe we also pulled sixteen.
Oh, did we? Did I miss one? No, I crossed that out too quickly. Sorry. Yeah, sixteen it is.
Okay. Resolution approving contract change order number two for the Sixth Street Softball Parking Lot Improvements Project, number PRK two one zero zero one, an increase of two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Again, Your Honor, I was asked to pull this for a member of the public.
Okay, anybody else wanna speak up here? If not, let's open it up to the microphones and computers and, uh, anybody in the public here present.
The lines are unmuted.
Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. Sorry to belabor the point, but the recreational trail program grant could be used for this project. And the only reason I can't see that we're not is, I guess it's more sexy to borrow money for this than the other one, so, thanks.
Keep the mics open for ten. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No, nope.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
No, on to number nineteen. Enable.
Resolution setting a public hearing and approving plans, specifications form a contract and costs for the Lynn Creek Trail Improvements Project twenty twenty-one in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, being project number TRL two one zero zero one.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Same point, Your Honor.
Uh, same point, meaning, uh, somebody in the public should be speaking. Nobody else up here wants to talk? Let's open the mics. They're open.
Thank you, Your Honor.
The mics are unmuted.
Again, sorry to belabor the point. Mark Eaton, ten oh seven South Tenth Avenue. Uh, the grant for the COVID relief could be covering this. Um, it seems, I, I just wish we could figure out how to use these grants instead of borrowing money for the stuff within the city limits. Thank you.
Let's go, mics open for another five. Nobody else has been commenting on this stuff yet.
I do have a point of clarification to make on this. This is funds that you have already borrowed in previous borrowings. Um, there was two hundred and fifty thousand that I think was borrowed in the twenty nineteen A and then I, or twenty twenty A, and then another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you held a public hearing and designated by resolution from the twenty, twenty nineteen A. So there is five hundred thousand dollars total for trail improvements along the Lynn Creek Trail. This is not putting in any trail that does not currently exist. This is making improvements to the current system.
Thank you. Thank you for your institutional memory on that stuff, too. Um, seems like we've had the mics open long enough. Let's go ahead and vote on it.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Okay, on to motions after we got the consent agenda handled. First one, please read that.
Motion to approve ownership updates on liquor license for Dollar General Store number two one eight five eight at one oh four West State Street.
Any motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, Your Honor, there was changes in the board members, um, for Dollar General Store, so they were updating their ownership on their liquor license.
Sure. Uh, we sometimes ask the Chief of Police if there's anything to worry about about this one and I'm seeing ahead of the nod going, nope, no problem. Anybody else wish to speak up here? How about the public for five seconds?
Well, uh, one second here. I moved the screen. The lines are unmuted.
Five it is. Roll call.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That carried as well. Let's go on to item H reports and the first one is, uh, Marshalltown Central Business District update. Hi, Deb. Apropos time to address here.
Hi there, everyone.
Hi, Deb.
Deb Millizer, Marshalltown Central Business District, sixteen East Main, and it's my pleasure to be here this evening. Um, this is my first time as the Executive Director giving you all a formal report. I've appeared a few times to talk about incentive grants and then, you know, COVID nineteen kinda take care of, um, showing up in person and I got to watch, you know, you guys on TV, on the computer, so I appreciate being here this evening. Um, the MCBD, like many, well, like all of the other Main Street districts, are comprised of four different committees. It's one of the requirements for, um, to be accredited as a Main Street community. We are one of only fifty-five communities in the state of Iowa to be a Main Street community. Um, those four committees are comprised of volunteers. I'm the only paid staff and so I really am in need and really appreciate, um, great volunteers. These volunteers really work hard to elevate the quality of life for Marshall, downtown Marshalltown and Marshalltown. Um, those four committees include our organization committee, which is kind of the nuts and bolts of the organization. And I'm not gonna talk much about them tonight because in my eyes, they do great important work, but it's not the fun stuff that everybody sees. They're, they're, they're putting in the, the elbow grease to make sure all the paperwork lines up. Um, Economic Vitality is our committee that really works on supporting our downtown businesses and uses data to help drive, um, and recruit additional businesses to the downtown. Um, our third committee would be our design committee, so that, that committee is in charge of beautification efforts in the downtown and we'll talk a little bit more about that as I move along. And I'm gonna move along kinda quickly, 'cause I know you guys wanna get home and enjoy the nice weather, too, so I'll move along. Um, and then our fourth committee, which I often call the fun committee, is really our promotions committee and they're really responsible for the activities in the downtown, both small and large. The most notable that they're known for would be, um, the, excuse me, this, it's hard to talk with the mask on, would be the adopt a vet and our beloved holiday stroll, which, you know, last year COVID kinda took care of for us and we put a lot of work and effort into that and had to keep changing it till finally we just couldn't move forward anymore. But this year, there's gonna be some things that's changed. Um, as I said before, I've had the pleasure of being the Executive Director since August of twenty nineteen. So I have worked through the aftermath of the tornado, um, COVID nineteen, which none of us saw coming, and then again, our second natural disaster, the Derratio. Um, out of all these experiences, the one thing that I have really learned is the downtown community is full of tenacity. They have pulled it together by their bootstraps and they have moved forward. They've been creative and they've really, really kept their eyes on the goal. Um, I know that they are ready to be out of the storm's path, whether that is a- I know that they are ready to be out of the storm's path, whether that is a natural disaster or, uh, a pandemic, and they are ready to make downtown Marshalltown even stronger and moving forward than it was in July of 2018. As you know, the downtown community is the heart of the community. It's the place where many of us have created our memories with our families. We have those experiences. It's where we live, work, play, and shop. So it's really important that these four committees, even the boring org, and I'm sorry, my, my org volunteers if you're watching, but even, they all work cohesively and together to make things happen. So Economic Vitality over the last year, um, they, they are the ones that are responsible for helping to vet the incentive grant applications that come before you. I could, today I was, you know, counting on my fingers and toes and trying to think of how many that we've vetted before it's actually come to you, and I'd say there's probably been 12 to 15 that have come to you. And out of those, I believe 10 you have approved over the last year or so. So as you remember, that is a 25% reimbursement, um, to the building owners for putting their, their capital back into the downtown. And so I really want to thank you for believing in the downtown and investing in the downtown. Of those that have, um, done the incentive grants, many of those, um, I have connected to Main Street Iowa, and they have been able to get renderings of their visions, and those visions, um, sometimes can be a little bit more modern. And we really try to help them come up with a way that still meets their vision, but still matches the goals of a historic downtown. So we really try to connect them there. Um, we also applied for and received the $75,000 Challenge Grant that's going towards Zamora's. Um, before long, you will be seeing some construction going on there, and we're hopeful that the construction will be completed for Phase 1 before July of 2021. So that's very exciting to me. And the other thing that I've been working on behind the scenes is I really, I get to partnership, or work in partnership with Region 6 and the city of Marshalltown and the downtown building owners. We're really working to create, to gather information, to put together a really strong application for the downtown revitalization grant, and that will be so impactful for the downtown community if we're able to do that. So as I've said numerous times, and probably to people in this room, I hate to wish my life away, because we really have such short lives. However, if I could just wave a magic wand and get to two to three years down the line and see all the wonderful things that are coming to downtown Marshalltown, I would take that chance, and I would just love to see the future, so I'm really looking forward to that. The next committee that I'd like to just give you a brief update on is the promotions committee. Like I said, the fun committee. We kind of got all of our efforts squashed last year. What we've learned from the experience, and now that we're all getting, or some of us are getting vaccinated, um, we're really trying to find a way to move forward and be safer about it and really create experiences in the downtown. Now, we're, we have to take some baby steps. Um, right now, we have a great, um, promotion or activity going on in the downtown. Um, it is a storybook walk. Um, you may have seen that in some of your stores. Um, we have partnershiped with the Marshalltown, partnered with the Marshalltown Library and took pages out of a book, um, named Book Fiesta. It is a bilingual book. There are 15 of the stores downtown, and we're really encouraging the families to come out and safely experience this book, really celebrate our diversity that we have in Marshalltown, and really encourage, um, literacy. So we're really, we're really excited about that one right now. Um, we have things lined up throughout the summer, and May, we plan on a family game night at Smokin' G's. We're hoping to, um, serve buffet style and have games for the family to come. So really just a small scale, but an experience that you can get tickets to in advance. In June, it's National Best Friends Day, so we're going to host a mini photo, um, session, so bring your bestie. I know you all have some besties, new ones, old ones. Bring them downtown, have an experience, post it on Facebook, do a hashtag, just have some fun with it. Um, so that's all about bringing, you know, having some experiences. And in July, I can't really compete with fireworks. Um, but, you know, since we can't go red, white, and boom in the downtown, maybe we could do something else to really celebrate, um, our independence. August, ridiculous days. We're hoping to have a downtown party. We're hoping that maybe we can have a bag tournament. We're still working on these things, music, um, and of course, it, it takes volunteers to be able to pool all of this together. It doesn't just happen overnight. It takes many months in advanced planning. September, you know, it's Oktoberfest. I don't get to help with that, but you know, the community has that to look forward to. October, trick or treat in the downtown. We have some ideas that we're bouncing around, maybe a scarecrow contest, something to really engage the community. Um, November, Adopt a Vet, and then our beloved Holiday Stroll. Um, we have the beautiful Coliseum now, and we have reserved it. Um, we plan on, um, bringing the public into it, hosting our Festival of Trees. Um, we have a, we tried it a couple of years ago, um, for, uh, Christmas Village Market with crafts items in there, and so we plan on hosting that in there as well, and we want to bring back, you know, our carriage rides, our lighted parade, window contest, you know, and of course, Santa Claus. So we're hoping that this year, you know, we'll really be able to bring it back to the traditional way that it was and really celebrate together. And the last committee that I want to talk about, because as I said, you know, even though I love my org committee and they're awesome, um, the, the design committee. Um, we, uh, had a councilman who had posted up on Facebook, Mike, had posted that he wanted to, um, get some volunteers for, for cleanup of his ward. Um, we were already working behind the seeds, scenes on our second team up to clean up in the downtown. We did that last November and had a great turnout, and so, um, we reached out to Mike and we were able to part, partner with that. So on May 8th, um, at 8:30 in the morning, we were asking volunteers to come down to Villa Chilato to bring their, um, their gar, gardening tools, broom, dustpan, their good attitudes, um, their can-do attitudes, and we will provide, you know, the orange trash bags, um, gloves, masks, and Justin with the city is absolutely great. Um, last year, he partnered with us as well. It's my understanding that, um, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought here. Junk Relief and the city may be partnering to, um, come around about midday to pick up the orange trash bags, so they're, you know, they're just glowing out there. These are the ones that we're going to be picking up. So we're excited about that, because everybody loves a clean downtown. Um, the other fun things that we have going on is we're looking to put new banners in the downtown. Um, they should be going up in June. And then, if you haven't heard about it, then I don't know where you live, but the flower baskets are coming back this year. So we are working on that drive. We're still looking for volunteers to help water our beautiful vibrant flowers, um, from third to third. Um, it takes daily watering, so if you want to be really cool and drive a green gator and drag a watering tank downtown early in the morning, get your friends, coworkers, create a team, and we can set you up. You can either contact me or contact Travis Hornberg, who is our design chair, and we can, we can do that. And we hope to, um, later on in the year, have a second team up to clean up, if not a third. So, um, yeah, I really spit that out there. Our community has, uh, a lot of growth ahead of it, and partnerships are key in helping to move our community forward. Um, this past Thursday, we had a Main Street Iowa representative come to Marshalltown, Carol Lilly. She is the Downtown Development Specialist. She, um, spent the morning with our board, some, um, chairs of our committees. She met with Jessica, our city administrator, and she toured the downtown, met with many of the building and business owners. She even met with our mayor and two, um, councilmen's, uh, Councilman Mike and Gary. And, um, she left, it was about 7:00 o'clock at night when she left. She started at 7:30 in the morning, so it was a long day for her, but she was committed. She had some great lunch at Smokin' G's, too. It was a good day. But I got a report back today. And in the report, the positive feedback said that we are really ticking away of the goals of the downtown master plan. That's us, you know, as a downtown community, really working on that. Um, she also said that there was, you know, evidence of a reinvestment in the community, that people really want the downtown to thrive. And the third thing that I picked up out of there that pertains to this is the partnership between the city and the MCBD is positive and strong. And that was really evident when COVID-19 hit, and previously to that tornado before my time, um, duratio, that, um, you guys understood how important the MCBD organization was to the downtown and voted to support it. So I, I thank you for that, and it was noted in our Main Street Iowa report. The last thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank you for your commitment to not only the downtown, but the entire Marshalltown community. And it really takes believers and doers, like the people in this room, to really move our community forward. So I know you guys sit here, you know, a couple of times a week. That's what people see, but I know you're working on a lot of things behind the scenes, and so I really appreciate your time and your dedication. How was that for fast, Mike?
That, that was pretty good. I'm going to remind people that May 8th, we're going to do a cleanup in Ward 1. And just like, uh, Deb said, just show up between 8:30 and noon at Villa Chilato. We'll have gloves, we'll have bags, we'll have all that kind of stuff. And working with the downtown people, this has been great, because we're going to do not only downtown, we're going to try and do most of Ward 1 if we can. Um, it shouldn't take very long. Um, we have Junk Relief helping us out. Hoagland's, Lonny Hoagland has his Cash for Clunkers thing going on. So if you have title to a vehicle that's just taking up yard space, he's paying cash for it. So get ahold of him. If you add on to, not only, May 15th, there will be dumpsters at the JBS parking lot for larger items, personal items. So if you have larger items, be able to do that. And on top of that, on May 15th, the Household Hazardous Waste Drop Off at Riverview Park from 8:00 to 11:00. Now, the one thing I want to make people aware of in Ward 1 is this is not a pull all your personal stuff out and put it by the curb, because you're going to be taking it all back. This is merely walking along. Uh, we're going to pick up all the trash that's blowing around between the sidewalk and the street. We're not taking large items at that time. So if you want to get out and get a good walk, meet some of the CBD people, I mean, we're going to have a good time on the 8th, I think.
Yeah, unfortunately, I won't be there, because you didn't ask me if that was the day that I could be there. I'll be with my family, but I know you got handled.
Yeah, yeah. I, I have Mr. Hornberg, so.
So, does anybody have any questions for me?
Any other questions or comments?
Your Honor. Deb, it was a pleasure, um, visiting with Carol from the, the state, uh, Main Street program. Thank you for having me. Um, I know Mike and, and the mayor share my views. It was, I could tell, we were the last one she met with. You could tell she had a good visit that day. And that speaks volumes for you and your volunteers, your, your organization.
Thank you, Gary. It was a really good day.
It was, you could just tell. She was, she was ready to go home, but she was, she was still patient, and she, uh, it was, it was good that she was here.
Yeah, it was good, and she gave us some great feedback and some recommendations, and we'll take that and we'll just move it forward.
And it's going to be a slow process downtown, and we need to continue to celebrate the little victories downtown. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Very good report. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
As you're going back to your seat, and you're welcome to go, too. You don't need to stick around. We, we only have to look outside this window here to the northeast to see the new grocery store that's popped up. And if you, if you walk downtown and look at, uh, what used to be a photography studio, Apgars, it's now Wax Static, Wax Static. I have trouble pronouncing that one. Their, their building got creamed in the tornado, and they have moved, and they fixed up the new building, and they have a beautiful sign out front. It just fits right in with the same old decor and facade. And so if you're looking for examples of what, what's happening downtown, those are two good ones to look at right now. It's just kind of fun. I also wanted to, to do a shout out to, well, the restaurants are doing pretty well now downtown. That's, that's picking up, and that's nice. Those that are getting COVID shots, uh, and waiting two weeks are getting out in the public, and that's helpful. I wish more people would do that. It's the right thing to do to, uh, try to get us back to some normalcy. And then I know from watching, you know, I, I guess I'm an ex-official on the CBD board, uh, Jessica goes to most of the meetings and reports back to me. Uh, but I, I've been hearing from people that are downtown business owners how much they appreciate your outreach going around to check in with each, each store owner and getting around downtown. So that's, that's something that does not go unnoticed, and I just needed to point that out to the public. So, thank you for that. Okay, let's go on to, uh, get some work done at resolutions. Number one, would you read that one, please?
Resolution approving an offer to buy real estate for 108 and 110 West Main Street.
Is there a motion approved?
So moved.
We'll go to the second on the, Lottie Huff, Isom on the motion, discussion. Well, if there is no discussion, I guess I need to call for, uh, that was council discussion. Let's call for public discussion. Let's go, five seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
Okay. Two, one, zero, vote.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
I must abstain due to a conflict of interest.
Weirin?
Yes.
Okay. Carried on that one. Uh, one able read the second resolution for us.
Resolution approving the Viejo, Viejo First Edition Preliminary Plat.
Solicited a motion approved.
So moved, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Let's go with Martin on the motion, Isom on the second. Uh, discussion on that one.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As was kind of previously discussed, sorry, I probably rolled right past it, didn't I? Uh, the Viejo Bluffs First Edition is a plat of city property as part of the Hibbs, uh, East Merle Hibbs Boulevard Street Extension Project. So with, uh, initially, when the city acquired the parcel, we acquired what we needed for the street, street right of way up to the northern property line. Certainly, we didn't need, uh, all of that property for the street itself, um, so we knew that we would have some, uh, additional parcel land that would be available. It was, uh, decided that, uh, we would split that property up into, uh, what ultimately is three pieces, which requires a subdivision. So the, the street parcel itself, as well as the two lots to the north, as Jessica Kinzer previously stated, just kind of following along that property line, uh, of the northern properties. Uh, so it would create two lots. Um, these are zoned, uh, traditional neighborhood currently and available for, uh, multi-use type of development, whether it be residential, commercial, or, uh, multi-use type of facility. So, uh, has a lot of, uh, development potential. The, the lot sizes are certainly large enough to do a variety of development, um, options on them. So, uh, this is the preliminary plat, as was previously, uh, discussed. Uh, we will have a final plat that would come forward. Typically, the final plat comes forward after the infrastructure, uh, is complete, so that we know where those final lines are and measurements. So we will see that come forward, along with all of the legal paperwork that, uh, supports the subdivision to be recorded and lots to be sold. Um, I wanted to put this out there, this one through the commission, uh, as well as county review and approval, um, as part of that process. So recommended approval.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? Uh, before you get too comfortable sitting down, let's call for public comment, just for five seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
Well, let's vote.
Lottie Huff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that carried. Now, read the third one, and we'll start a public hearing.
Public hearing and resolution approving the FY 2021 Consolidated Transit Funding Application for the Marshalltown Municipal Transit Public Transit Program.
Okay. I'll declare the public hearing is open. The time is now 6:38 PM. Did you receive any written clerk, uh, written comments to the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comment next, then.
The lines are unmuted.
I don't hear anybody online or on the phone or anybody standing up, so let's go on to staff review then.
Kevin Figories, you're transit administrator. We have two grants for this next upcoming fiscal year. Uh, the first is the, uh, is from the state, uh, for $192,000. And the second grant is from the federal transit in, uh, in the amount of $211,000. Uh, we have no big projects, uh, no capital buses, uh, projects, so, um, this is just, uh, revenue for, uh, sorry, grants, uh, for the day-to-day expenses.
Thank you. Any, uh, let's see, council comments. So time for comments or questions. Hearing none. I will declare the public hearing is closed at 6:40 PM. Does anybody wish to move to approve the resolution?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lottie Hoff on the second. Let's open it for discussion for five. We already did the discussion. Let's, let's forego that and do the roll call, sorry.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. Nonme, I'm going to get the hang of this about December 31. Let's go on to the next public hearing then.
Public hearing and resolution approving development agreement with Glenwood Marshalle Town LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
It's still 6:40. The public hearing is open. Did you receive any written comments to the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments, five seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
Good enough. Staff review.
Yes, so at the last council meeting, there was a resolution to set this public hearing. Or I should say, it was at the special council meeting that we had on the 28th to set the public hearing on this development agreement with Glenwood Marshalle Town LLC. This is specifically stated in the urban renewal plan, which was approved on April 26th, and provides that the developer can be reimburse tax increment financing from any new homes that are built in the area to reimburse infrastructure costs up to $1.4 million. So there's a 10-year period, once this starts, for them to be able to collect that $1.4 million. Let's say that they have $2 million in costs. They can only get $1.4 million. Let's say by year 10, they've only been able to collect $500,000, which hopefully will not be the case. That's all they, they get. So those are the, the pretty basic terms and conditions of a TIF agreement for residential development. So it's a little bit different than other TIF agreements that we've talked about, and so those are some of the unique features that are present.
Thank you. Time for council comments.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
And Jessica clarified to the public that they don't get their whole money on every house that's built. We cut, we take our 40% on each payment, right?
Yeah.
Low moderate income?
Correct. If they were building properties, and there is a calculation that you can go through, I should say the developer is not planning to be the builder. But if a property is considered low-income housing, meaning those that would be moving into it are 80% of the annual median income, then there's, there's a reason to consider it low-income, where the developer would get 100% of the rebate. If, if they are not fitting that demographic, then there is a, an amount that we will take off the top that is slightly more than 40% and to hold in a special revenue fund for the city council to direct towards low-to-moderate-income housing projects.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that part to the public. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, any other council comments? The public hearing is then closed at 6:43 PM, and I entertain a motion to approve that resolution as well.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Well, Isim was just a little bit faster than Martin on that one. Let's call the roll.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Carried as well. Let's go to item J. Ordinances. Would you read the first one, one able?
Ordinance 15018, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property designated as section of the Marshalle Town Urban Renewal Area Number 6, pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. First reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion by council.
I'll, I'll just clarify that basically you approve a development agreement, and that's great. But they, there's no instrument for the actual collection of the taxes until you adopt an ordinance that sets out the area from which the taxes are to be collected. And so this area is not the entire urban renewal area, but just the specific area that the developer is replating and purchasing.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
And Jessica, there's no reason to waive anything. We can go, there's no hurry on this. We can go through all three readings, correct?
That's correct. If that is what you would all like to do, then I would recommend that that's what you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. Any other council comments? Well, let's go for the public unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. One able, let's go to the next ordinance.
Ordinance 15019, establishing a vacant property code. First reading.
Solicited a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As we've previously discussed, with the, what's before you is a vacant property code ordinance, identifying a way for us to register and track vacant property within the community, both building, parcels with buildings and vacant, and vacant lots. The code has been reviewed by our legal counsel and is ready to be before you. So I don't have a whole lot of changes, really, from what we presented as your draft back a couple of meetings ago. But I'd entertain if there are any specific questions that you may have.
Any hurry on this one, or should we let this go the normal course of three readings as well?
Uh, no, I think this certainly, being something new, I'd recommend continuing through the full, normal course of things. And we would, I believe, be looking at an implementation start date. I think I have it there on July 1st.
Okay, thank you. Council questions or comments?
Your Honor, I have a question for legal, I guess. If during the second or third reading, if, if any of us bring forth an amendment to this, does it have, does it continue on, in this case, the specific case, does it continue the three readings, or does it start all over if we amend it?
Continue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yep, and, and for those online or on the phone, the answer was it does continue. Any other council questions or comments? Public comment, unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
On a roll. That carried. Let's go to the third and final ordinance then.
Ordinance 15020, to amend code of ordinances, City of Marshalle Town, Iowa, Sections 52.029, concerning wastewater rates. First reading.
My favorite topic. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved, Your Honor.
Crickets.
Second, Your Honor.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. Discussion.
Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. This is a ordinance to the changes that we discussed at our last meeting. The rate changes would go into effect on January 1, 2022. Can I answer any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
And Justin, this was based on the study that was done.
That is correct.
Recommended by the professionals.
Correct. It is a modest 1% increase to our rates on January 1, 22, 2023, and 2024.
Nothing has been changed since that discussion.
Nothing has changed.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Now, we're required to do this to keep being a city, as I understand it as well, aren't we not, are we not?
Well, not, not to raise the rates, but as an enterprise fund, it's self-sufficient.
The authorities above us require us to continue to handle our wastewater, though, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments for Justin? Otherwise, we'll open up the mics and unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Done with the action items. Let's go on to discussion items then, the first one of which is discussion of MCTV funding.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'll pull up the memo because I kind of have things broken down into three different sections to, to talk about. I was notified by Jackie with Iowa Valley Community College District that the employee who has been part of the MCTV program for a number of years will be resigning as of June 30th. With this announcement, the IVC, IVCCD has decided not to renew the contract for the operation of the cable channel. As you'll recall, in the budget process, you had earmarked $40,000 in council-designated local option sales tax for this purpose. And so there, there are kind of three issues moving forward that, as we looked at the contract and how we amended it and what we were going to get out of that contract, that I'd like to kind of talk about and get your feedback on. And I've made a recommendation with each one. And so the, the first thing really that we were paying IVCC for was the operation of the cable channel. And that's really, it goes back to what that 1998 agreement was, was, again, the main function was operating the cable channel. They have all of the main equipment located at their facility. And so it is, I've, I asked the question about what it would take to move it to City Hall, and just had a kind of a vague answer of that it would be difficult to remove and would probably require some additional investment. I don't have anything more specific beyond that. I can share that I do not believe the space in the back room would be enough space for, for what would need to be moved in. The other thing that we, we don't have as the city is a staff member to manage the function or a department in which that would naturally flow to. It would more than likely fall to administration, Alicia or myself, to, to do that. And it would be basically an, an extra duty we need to do. And so with that, it is, it is, you know, not a, not a pleasant recommendation to recommend that we abandon the cable channel to focus on other forms of media and, and marketing. And so I don't know if you want me to go through these three things and then have discussion of everything, or if you'd like to have discussion after each one.
I don't have any preference. Anybody up here have a preference on that?
I'd go through the whole thing first.
Okay.
I agree.
The other part of that is what's happening tonight and what Craig is doing in the, the back room is the recording and the broadcasting of council meetings. Everything, everything in this room, in terms of equipment besides the computer monitors, and then that camera is basically 10 years old. The building opened up in, I think, 20, or 2009, I believe, after, was remodeled after the, the library moved into their new facility. And so there really haven't been many updates. We've certainly felt our challenges with that. One of the things that I did do was meet with BDH to talk about how a system could work without having to provide somebody to really control equipment, other than potentially just toggling between cameras at times. And so Chad with BDH is working on a quote. He said rough estimate would be 30,000 to 40,000. I'm not sure how many of you have looked at the, what the school is planning to do with their boardroom. Their quote was $38,000 to basically install kind of a, a touchpad to handle the toggling back and forth between things, installing a new computer that would basically run your virtual meeting software. We're, we've been trying to do that off of one computer, and as you can see, unless I can, you know, zoom this up so that it's not blocking the screen, your screen is always blocked. So we're not doing things in the most efficient way that we could be doing at this point. And so the, the, I'd like to recommend that we move forward with Chad putting it together, a full quote, for new technology in this room to better enhance the, the virtual, the broadcast on our website. Ultimately, that's the tool that I'm recommending, is that we do have a, a channel on our website that we kind of experimented with a few times, but we could really learn quite a bit more about in order to make that sort of the, the place that we direct people to see the meetings live. However, we all, we have a YouTube channel that we have been uploading the past meetings on, and that would still be the place where meetings would go after they occurred. So it would be taking, taking something and still making it something that is live, that can be seen. I'd also recommend in this that we do keep using GoToMeeting, Zoom, or something else to provide like another way for people to continue to view and to participate as well. And then finally, the other thing that we were, in my mind, really paying IVCC to do was to create videos that really targeted community pride from the internal level. So not doing regional marketing. We have an agreement with the chamber for that purpose. But that this was really marketing Marshalle Town to ourselves. This is actually a very, very important thing, and I think it's one of those things we saw in the community survey, where 30% of respondents reported a good or excellent, excellent rating of Marshalle Town's overall public image. And so this has been an ongoing battle. We don't have data that says that it was an ongoing battle prior to this, but 31% is still a number where I think there's a lot of room for improvement. And so without having an entity to do this, there are multiple entities out there, public or private. And so that's where, if this is something you'd like to do, I'd recommend that the $40,000 in local option sales tax, if it was not something that you wanted to dedicate towards, you know, technology upgrades, which could be done through our capital improvement fund, that we would look at seeing what proposals we could get for the internal marketing piece for the community. And then one other thing that was, that's been in the agreement since back to the beginning is a relationship with KDAO for the placement of their equipment to be able to obtain the broadcast as it's happening. That we would need to look into a separate agreement of that to ensure that we had protected ourselves for their, for the placement of non-city-owned equipment in the council chambers. And so that's really where I'm at on things. As I said, it's, it's certainly been a long-term relationship of 23 years in that this has really kind of dove into more than just the operations of a cable channel. And we're, we're certainly sorry to see that this is an opportunity we can't continue with after July 1st. But we do have some options for moving forward.
Thank you. Let me throw the question or the discussion open to the council first before the public. Any council questions or comments?
Your Honor.
Mr. Martin.
Public access has been an important part of what we do and how we operate and how we communicate with the public. And I applaud the relationship between Iowa Valley and the city in the past. All good things must come to an end, and sadly, this is one of them. I guess I've gotten more comments that we saw such and such and, and just learned about the discussion of such and such on the channel last night and so on. They want to talk about it. And I, so a lot of input has come along, along the way, and it's been good input. I suggest that we certainly go along and support Jessica's recommendation and pursue more modern and maybe more efficient means for getting our message out. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. Anybody else up at the council?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I guess I, I made a note here, four things. First one's a question. Jessica, if we have the technology to live broadcast this thing that you're talking about, Chad getting us a quote on, can any entity like KDAO or KFJB or any other radio station, can they just automatically grab it and, and broadcast it out live, besides us putting it on the net?
Um, I, I, I believe so. So Chad described the equipment that we currently have. I think it's like a splitter box or something that's just connected into cables. I, I'm not sure exactly how that would work. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how that would work, but he said that it would be something that could continue and that we could make available to anybody who, who wanted that.
Okay. And then my feeling on the GoToMeetings, I mean, everybody knows how I feel about this, is we need to put a stop to that and get people back up here in the chambers. I think if people want to make comments, if it's important enough to make a comment, they can come to the chamber and make a comment. And then I think, I brought this up earlier, if, if this is the direction we're moving, this is a, with the shakeup at the, the chain- moving, this is, with the shakeup at the chamber, this is a perfect opportunity. We don't need to use our taxpayers' money to fund all this change and everything. We have the right to capture the 240-some thousand dollars a year that comes from people staying in the hotels and motels, and we can market the city using those funds rather than paying someone else to market it. The third part of your thing, internal community pride marketing, $248,000 would be able to produce a lot of videos, hire a person to be our public relations person for the city, and even pay for the upgrades would probably fall under the scope of everything, you know, for the first year. And I think we have an award-winning library to promote. We have a brand-new Colosseum to promote. I believe it's in our best interest to market those two facilities in town. Let the hotels and motels pay for their own advertising. Let the restaurants pay for their own advertising. We market our downtown with the revitalization plan, the Marshalltown implementation plan. I think it would be negligent of us not to use this opportunity to continue to do the things we want to do and use the money that's flowing into the city coffers. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Other council comment?
I think it's obvious that we have to cut ties with the cable channel. As far as bringing new equipment in, I'm all for that. I want to get this broadcast out just as far as you can go. Whether people want to piggyback on it or not is absolutely fine. Anybody else wants to tag on to that? As far as what Gary brought up, I'd like to see, I'm interested in what you're talking about, but I'd like to see what it would take for the city to actually do that, bring it all in-house. And compared to what we're getting now, I know there's a shakeup at the chamber, but I'm sure they'll get that straightened out. And just see a side-by-side comparison if we did this or if we did this. So, then we can make a more informed decision.
So, I agree with some of what you said. I agree with the recommendations and the memo. I think it would be better to, you know, you brought up a funding question, Mr. Thompson, and I'm, we can have that discussion sometime, the funding. But I think it would be better for now to not look at adding a city position because that's what this would take. I think we should leverage whatever dollars we choose to use by partnering with these other organizations that do produce really nice videos. And it gets, I think it adds to the credibility. And the request for proposal, I think, you know, KDAO does a great job producing video and content, and they may go after something like this. And maybe this isn't the right dollar amount, but whatever it is, you know, I think it adds credibility when there are more voices being heard and more people producing content rather than the city, you know, the government. It just doesn't seem like it fits with what we need to do as a government. So, I think we should share it.
Thank you. Other council comments?
No, I think I would agree with Bethany on a third party. I think by the time we look at count benefits and everything else, we're going to exceed that. I will be curious to see what a request for proposal would look like as far as services and maybe some examples of what a different party could produce. But I think I'm in line that, at least at this moment in time, that's where I'm leaning toward. Otherwise, I would agree that the other recommendations are, as is, and I am aligned with.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's...
Well, I was going to say, just one comment that I will make because I have had conversations with Councilmember Thompson about, that I really do think that as we talk about changing the image and things, that we do need a communications director for the city. As I look around the room, the people that are here, that are city employees, are the ones who are spending time getting things on our website, getting things on our Facebook page, that it's so decentralized. The problem is that local option sales tax is fleeting. We're going into this next year with a budget deficit. I just don't think that now is the right time. There's nothing really showing that revenues, other than one-time revenues, are going to grow in a way to be able to support that level of position. But please know that it is one of my goals that we could get there at some point in time. I just don't feel great recommending it right now, knowing where we're at in terms of budget and moving forward.
Anybody else from the council? Otherwise, let's go ahead and open the mics again.
The microphones are open.
Let's go 10 seconds this time. Okay. Do you feel like you have consensus from the council, or do you need a motion?
So, what I would like to do is, at the next council meeting, bring back that request for proposal document. I'll probably try and talk with each of you in the meantime so that I can make sure that I'm covering everything that you would want to see from that. Bring back that, as well as then, as soon as I have a quote from Chad, from BDH, to bring that back as well to make sure that you are aware of what we would be talking about in terms of funding, as well as what that system looks like. Because I think it's going to impact each of you in your meeting environment as well. And so, that would be my, what I would plan to do and ultimately start the transition to the online broadcast of meetings on our website.
Okay. Well, I know councilors, Gary and Mike heard this. Oh, yep, we're still open for a public comment.
Mark Osmondson, 1916 Gethman Lane. And like a lot of people, I'm wearing several hats tonight. First of all, when I appeared before you several weeks ago regarding funding, we certainly, on behalf of the Cable TV Advisory Committee, appreciate the council's support of what we've been doing. And there were some unforeseen personnel changes that precipitated this decision by Iowa Valley to not renew the agreement. But we do want to thank you for your photo confidence and your past funding. I'm also here representing KDAO, and our relationship with the city council predates the 1998 agreement that Jessica included in your packet for tonight. We partnered with the local cable system in 1987, right after we started at the local TV station, to broadcast, record, and stream on the cable system your council meetings. MCTV got involved, and we've continued to provide free over-the-air coverage of your city council meetings, and then later added live online streaming and archiving of your meetings at no cost to the city. There was reference to some non-city-owned equipment that was installed. We did that at our expense because the city did not have money allocated to put in that equipment. So, we put it in and installed it and maintained it at our expense. We provide the airtime, the streaming capability at no charge to the city. All that we ask is that we get a dual feed of what's being fed or recorded from council chambers. And we would welcome the opportunity to continue with that and to work with Jessica and BDH or any of your other contractors to continue with that service at no charge to the city and the taxpayers here in Marshalltown. I think it's important to have that openness. Our television station is available free with an over-the-air antenna. You don't need cable, but we are also on cable. If you have cable TV, you can pick it up. We've done that for many years and would like to see that continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And what I was going to repeat was the joke about change, how inevitable it is unless you're dealing with a vending machine. And this is one of those changes. There's no question that for decades now, the city and KDAO have had a good relationship, and there's been a lot of communication and a lot of ability by citizens, especially those with computers, let alone radios and TVs, to troll that information. And the videos that have highlighted the city through KDAO have been appreciated. I just wanted to note that.
For the public.
Okay, I think that we've closed that discussion item. Let's go on to the logo and city council chambers item.
Yeah, so this is pretty light content, but something that I know I've heard for more than four years about what could be done here in council chambers. And so, Kylie with Vision Marshalltown worked with Sign Creations to get two quotes on what would look like that, not exactly placed, but basically the M and the Marshalltown more than ever behind you, above you in a way that it would always be visible that, unless we had someone who's extremely tall, basically would be there behind you as sort of a background. And so, there were two quotes that she got. One was for just your regular vinyl letters, and that was, I think, $250. And then, the second one was to do acrylic letters, which would have some dimension. The donor wall in the Colosseum is made out of acrylic. And so, as you look at that, you can see that there's some dimension to it in different areas. So, we could choose what that thickness would probably look like. That one was a little under $1,200. And so, this is something. I think if it's something you would all like to do, we should just get it done this year.
The floor is open for discussion.
I think it would be great. I think we should go with the vinyl. Is it vinyl? No, acrylic, the ones that stand out a little bit, the nicer ones. It'll be great.
Your Honor.
Ms. Martin.
I've long supported this as a backdrop for council chambers, and we worked at it to get funding and so on, and explored different areas of how to get it done. My only concern is that for photographic purposes, that it be a more of a matte finish and not a shiny finish that would reflect poorly on the council chambers and so on for vision, visual impact. So, yeah, I support this. I think something needs to be symbolic of, if you will, of city council and of Marshalltown. And I think this is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Others?
I'll just echo Bethany in support of the acrylic, more dimensional backdrop to the council chambers.
Anyone else?
I might just interject that where I got part of this idea, and it didn't happen to be anything with art, or I was involved in some art stuff, but what struck me was, we went, a group of us went to Newton. And if you've ever been in their facility, when you walk in the door, the first thing that jumps out at you is their logo on their wall. And when this was discussed, I don't know, four or five years ago, I thought that was a good idea. And I wasn't sold completely on the art end of it, but this seems to be, and I guess I'd have to see a picture of how that reflects, but it, I think you would notice it when you walk in this front door, it's going to jump at you. I have no doubt that that would enhance the whole area, as it did when I walked in at Newton. And I'm sure other council chambers have it, but I actually, this price actually surprises me. I thought that would be a lot higher than this price, but not complaining. It's just...
So, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So, when the camera would focus in on you, it would say Mars More above your head? Is that right? That would explain a lot.
Well, it's going to say Own Ever on your end. And Hall Van, I guess that's what I get. Or Shell Van. Oh, that's not so bad. Any other council comment on this one?
I'm probably the most horrible person to ask about design, so I'm going to defer to the other council members on this one.
I got D's and F's in art, if you want to compare notes. Hell? What do you think?
I don't need anything.
Okay. Okay. Jack Lasers family is involved in Laser Graphics. They do this kind of thing, and they do it very well. But I'm glad that we have a local company that's able to put something together like this. And I too am shocked. I mean, we had to spend a lot more time and money coming up with this logo than what it will take to put it behind us, truly.
So, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
So, my recommendation after the tornado and the deratio of Marshalltown, less trees than ever, that finished a distant second? Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Just checking.
God bless the class of 69 that ought to be in there someplace too for replanning. Okay, I think you got your direction there. Okay, very good. Okay, well, it's time for me to read the new, or old recycled public comment proviso, which goes like this. Members of the public may make comments on any item not on the agenda during this time. The speakers shall approach the mic, state the name and address, and limit the comments to three minutes unless longer is authorized by me. Direct the comments to the mayor and councils as a whole. And the mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on any items raised by members of the public, and action may be taken on those items in order to comply with the open meetings laws. Time is now 7:17 PM, and the microphones are open and unmuted.
Good evening.
Hello.
This is Karen Berger, 812 West... Hello, hi.
Hi, we can hear you, Karen.
This is Karen Berger, 812 West... Pardon me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. 812 West Merle Hibs Boulevard. Mayor, is this the correct time to address things that weren't on the agenda? Is that what I'm understanding?
It is. We're open mic time.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. I just had a couple more thoughts about the development out here at Glenwood and the proposed addition. The other night, I counted when I was trying to leave our street, leave West Merle Hibs to get onto Sixth Street, which is really the only way out, and I had to wait for 21 cars to go by. I'm wondering if any thought has been given to doing a traffic study, if there will have to be four-way stops or something like that put in. Sometimes it's not bad at all, but at certain times of the day, it is very difficult to get out. And I don't, you know, it's only going to get harder with a minimum of 44 more cars, and probably most of those homes will have two drivers in them and that many more cars. So, that was one thought that I had, that I wanted to bring up before the council. And then, another one was, there was a man here, a couple weeks ago, an employee, down about the pond, looking to see where the waste, or the rainwater and stuff came in. And I was just wondering if studies have been done to make sure that the pond here can handle all the more water that will be running off of those lots once it's not farmland anymore. So, those were two thoughts that I'd had that I just wondered if the city had looked into.
Sure. Thank you.
Karen, if you can put your email address into the chat function, we will have the engineering department get back to you on that.
Okay. I don't know if I had to do that, but I'll see if I can. Thank you.
Another easy way would be to call the clerk's office tomorrow too, if that is easier. For what it was worth... Go ahead, Karen.
Yes, I can do that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I can do that. I will do that tomorrow. Thank you.
I spent quite a bit of time in the last two weeks in two different cities where the roundabouts were used significantly. And I just have to say, I'm getting used to them, and man, they work well. And so, that might be another option out there. I know that we're looking at a roundabout on South Center Street, south of, or at Lynn, I think, and maybe the intersection south of that, maybe that's Madison. And so, yeah, if we did a traffic study, we've already changed the speed limit out at that intersection in the past 10 years. The traffic has, I'm not surprised that you'd count 21 cars out there before, so maybe there's something to look into. And then, I trust that our engineering department will be in contact with developers to figure out my favorite topic of the stormwater runoff things and whether we can approve those as a city or not. So, thanks for that input. I think we can look into that. Anybody else on the computer or telephone or here present like to make any public comments? Anybody else on the computer or telephone or here present like to make any public comments? Hearing nothing and seeing nobody rising at 7:20 PM, we're adjourned. Thank you for attending.